Denzel. Good morning and thank you for joining. I'm Aracely Cruz Calbright Senior Marketing Manager. Today, I'd like to welcome you to our Board of Trustees Executive Committee Meeting on Tuesday, February 16th, 2021. Please follow along with our agenda on Board Docs. You can find the link on our website, calbright.org, under About, Board of Trustees. For attendees who wish to make public comment, please use the Q&amp;A feature to request to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comment should be pertaining to today's agenda. If you have any additional questions, please direct them to our Communications Director by emailing Taylor@calbright.org. A reminder, this board meeting is being recorded, and with that, I'd like to introduce our Board President Pamela Haynes.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the I'm sorry, I'd like to call the Calbright Executive Committee Meeting to order. And with that, we will now convene this regular meeting of the Executive Committee of Cal of the Calbright Board of Trustees. In addition to the members of the Executive Committee, we are joined by some of our other trustees so that they can participate in the study session regarding Calbright's strategic vision development. They will not be voting on the action item for consideration by the Executive Committee. So I can, so can you please call the role for this meeting, please?
Phil Degard-Aguinaldo.
Present.
Amy Costa. Tom Epstein.
Here.
Jelena Grande. Pam Haynes.
Here.
Jennifer Perry.
Here.
And Bill Rawlings.
Present.
Well, we, we indeed do have a quorum. I'd like to I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to call on our former President of, of the Board of Trustees, Tom Epstein, to lead us in that.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. So it's my turn to do a President's Report. I don't really have much, I don't have anything to share, other than I'm really glad to see all of your faces. We do have work in front of us. It's a, this agenda, I think, is very eye-opening relative to where Calbright is and where it's going. And I'm hoping that not only our Executive Committee members, I hope you all stay on, but I'm also hoping that our other members who plan to join us for the, for this strategic plan or strategic vision can stay for some parts of this, especially some of the information items. So again, thank you for being here and your interest. I'd like to now ask if our CEO will share her report with us.
Thank you, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and members of the Board of Trustees. It is a very exciting day for the Calbright team, and I'm going to keep my report short today because we have two very substantive presentations to prepare to share with the board. Next Tuesday, I will be testifying before the Assembly Budget Subcommittee on Education as a part of a hearing on the California Community Colleges, and I look forward to updating them on the progress that Calbright has made over the past year and answering any questions that they might have. We were also notified that Calbright has been awarded a Department of Defense Grant as administered through the Governor's Office of Planning and Research to provide experiential learning opportunities in advanced manufacturing. This project will allow us to actually engage with advanced manufacturing employers to explore training strategies that are focused on the skills needed in this field, and we will also work with other community colleges in the system to help place students with California's defense manufacturing community, the consortia firms, to better understand how to build that pipeline of talent to meet their workforce needs and more broadly, that of employers in, in the larger advanced manufacturing industry. I wanted to thank the board for sharing their input and perspectives as we developed the strategic vision that's being presented today of how Calbright can best serve our students and the larger system over the next three years, and I look forward to further collaboration as we move to finalize this work. Our discussion with the board, along with input from a broad range of stakeholders, research and data, from our work with prospective students, industry and employers, and I'm proud to say, the expertise of our growing team at the college really has been what has set the high-level direction that has allowed us to move more concretely to plan for the next sure-footed steps that we are going to take towards a stronger future for the college. Before we begin the forward-looking discussion, I also wanted to provide a snapshot of where the college stands today. Calbright has been maintaining a steady stream of enrollment since launching, and we've enhanced the student experience, prepared to launch new programs, and strengthened key aspects of our technology systems to better support that high-quality growth for the college that we'll be talking about. We have had success in reaching exactly the people that we were designed to serve. Our early enrollees reflected our state's tremendous racial diversity, and more than 90% were over the age of adults over the age of 25. And as you'll see in, in the two presentations today, we will continue to focus on what Calbright's designed to do, to enhance the skills and career opportunities of adult learners, but in a way that meets them where our focus population, where they are, working collaboratively to build and grow our successes to benefit the broader community college and workforce systems, and really holding ourselves to account for maintaining high standards. As you will hear in the second presentation, we'll also soon begin taking steps to steadily expand our enrollments, including through the launch of new competency-based programs and services. And we're taking a very strategic approach to that expansion at this stage of the college's development, because it'll help ensure that we're building the college for high-quality growth as we advance key milestones, including things like accreditation and eligibility for programs like federal financial aid, that will further enable more students to really be able to access this opportunity. It also reflects the importance of continuing to adjust our design to meet the changing needs of the learners that we're focused on, and those who the research shows are delaying decisions around post-secondary education, really resulting from this unprecedented personal and financial pressure that are being experienced by low-wage workers, women, and communities of color. Our goal for students to have, is for students to have a more seamless experience in their academic career journey with personalized academic and student supports upon enrollment at the college. Our student population, as we know and have talked about before, they face really different challenges than the typical post-secondary student, as they juggle homeschooling, job loss, a reduction in work hours, changes in employment status, housing instability, or having to care for other family members. What we are building tailors our support to address those kinds of unique needs. And part of what we've done is really redesigned that student experience in their program pathway to ensure that students are getting both those technical skills and those soft skills under a structure that better supports their progression, really based a lot in large part on our learnings from the beta cohort. Accordingly, all new students start in their program pathway and begin diving into their technical skills while also gaining the essential skills they need to be successful in the workplace. We are also reimagining the team around these students with deep integration of our faculty and staff to ensure that each student has the support they need at these really critical junctures, whether it's the application process, which we have identified remains a barrier and obstacle for them, whether it's through their academic course content or the management of their technology and their efforts to, to navigate career job searches. Giving the necessary foundation for that learning and helping to build the soft skills that are needed for them in today's job market are, are exactly where our faculty and staff are oriented. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention, we will have, we have our new VP of Workforce Strategy and Innovation alongside our interim VP of Instruction and Learning that'll lead the, the board through a presentation today about the pilots launching this spring. Stuart, if you don't know him already, has previously served as the Under-Secretary of Labor and Workforce Development under Governor Newsom and in leadership roles under Governor Brown. His deep knowledge of the labor market really puts Calbright in a position to build the kind of relationships with regional economic and workforce development organizations that are addressing our state's most urgent needs. In all of this, and I think it's evident from what I've said so far, we are really striving to be the student-first institution, keeping our student population, their unique needs, at the forefront of everything that we do. And as I close and we move towards the rest of the agenda, I wanted to pause for a minute to share with you a story, a story that was actually brought to my attention by one of our great faculty members, our Faculty Senate President, Michael Stewart. I've been holding the story in the forefront of my mind as I work every day, and a lot of us at the college have upon hearing of it. It's something that it humbles me, it drives me, and it reminds me that we're here to do at Calbright what matters the most in the most important way, what matters in the real lives of our students. Monica is a single mother of three, born and raised in Sacramento. She has a real passion for fixing things, but she didn't have a background in technology beyond her experience using computers for work and, work and school. In the past, she had actually tried an online program through a for-profit institution, but wasn't able to complete the program. And today, Monica's in our program, in our IT Support Program, because she wants that more stable future for the family. She said, "I think this offering is one of the best things to come to Californians, especially in a time like this, and I can't wait to get my hands on a Calbright future." That Calbright future for Monica is our North Star, and thanks to the remarkably hardworking and dedicated faculty, staff, and administration at Calbright, we're ready to support her and learners like her on that journey. So I wanted to thank you all today. I look forward to the conversation, and let's dive in.
Thank you, President Mignon. We're going to move to our first item, 2.1, which is the study session, and we have our CEO, Mignon, is going to introduce it. So if you'll do that, and we can dive in.
Thank you, President Haynes and Vice President Costa, members of the Executive Committee. We are excited. I'm joined by Lauren Asher, who has been our consultant on the, the project. Just want to make sure we have Lauren.
We do.
Okay. So if we could just bring up the presentation.
Denzel, are you able to pull it up? Thanks.
And I will turn things over to Lauren to, to start us off, and
Thanks, Ajita. Well, good morning, late morning, everyone. It's wonderful to see you all again. I'll begin just briefly with a reminder, which I include in every presentation, just, it should look familiar. This is the purpose of the process we're going through, just for context. Next slide, please. So this also should look somewhat familiar. It's the timeline for the process that we're in. As you can see, we're now at the stage of developing a draft, and the next step for the board will be the opportunity to review a draft later this month. Next slide, please. Sorry, I'm having a little tech delay. There we go. So these are the main elements of the Strategic Vision Report, as we shared at the January meeting. At that time, Ajita provided an overview of the external context that Calbright is operating in and some of the potential changes coming in the external environment. We shared and confirmed guiding principles for the vision, and those are included today in the deck, just for reference. And we walked through the sticks, strategic goal focus areas. Those are growth, collaboration, operations, accreditation, shared gains, and poised for acceleration, and the goal-setting process specifically for the enrollment and student outcomes that was still underway at the time. Now, today, we have three things to share, one in each of these elements. The first is an illustration of the demographics and the economic context that make Calbright's statewide role and mission so important. The second is the main elements of a timeline, and the third, but last definitely not least, Ajita will walk you through the proposed three-year goals for growth in student enrollment, completion, and labor market outcomes. Next image, please, Denzel. Thank you. Oh, there we go. So we, we're doing this on a separate PDF that you all received, so that you could see it in vertical form, given the shape of California. This map is a high-level illustration of how the current statewide demographic and economic context underscores the need for Calbright's unique role. It shows where the percentage of adults with high school completion but without degrees and the December 2020 unemployment rate are highest and lowest across the state. The dots are community colleges. Now, just for a sense of the, the key, the violet, the darkest purply-blue color, is the counties where both are the highest, where unemployment is from about 9% to 18%, and where adults without degrees make up about 50% to 66% of the population. And the gray is the lightest color, the counties where both are the lowest. Unemployment is about 5% to 8%, and adults without degrees are about 25.5% to 46%. This kind of information is going to help inform Calbright's regional partnership efforts, and in fact, already is. You're going to hear more about those in the next presentation. And it also helps tell the story of how challenging and varied the context in which Calbright's focused learners are operating may be from place to place. Next slide, please, Denzel. Thank you. Oh, nope. Thanks. So this is, as promised, a, the beginning, this is not the entire timeline. These are really the highest, most significant dates for a timeline that will be in the report and reflect the pacing that's built into the founding legislation. And it will give everyone an easy reference point for Calbright's trajectory from legislation to launch to scale, and where the strategic vision period falls in Calbright's development. We couldn't fit all of it on this slide. We wanted to just give you the high points for now, and you can see where it's going. It will look a lot more like an actual timeline in the report. But I'll just note that you can see that the progress so far includes launching the first three programs in a little over a year after the California Online Community College Act became law, and that Calbright has met all of its applicable statutory milestones to date. Next slide, please. Now, these are the guiding principles for the strategic vision, which will be in the report. They are grounded in Calbright's founding mission. They're consistent with the system's vision for success, and they're informed by all of the stakeholder input that we received, all the hopes and expectations for Calbright, internal and external, including themes you will recognize from the board's work session. I won't read them all through, because I know you'll have them for reference, and we discussed them last month, but I think they're really important context for this process and for the goals that Calbright is setting. Next slide, please. Now, goals can serve a lot of different purposes, and as we also discussed last month, it's important to be clear about the purpose here, which we've been talking about a lot through this process, as we've gotten more and more focused on the specific goals and vision. So these high-level goals are going to define what success looks like for Calbright as a whole. They are going to set the strategic direction for high-quality growth from now through 2023. They're going to preserve the flexibility needed to stay on course in what we know are very unpredictable conditions. They'll directly inform both internal decision-making and prioritization, and external accountability. And they will include but not be limited to statutory milestones. And finally, they all assume a stable base of funding at $15 million per year through 2023, as was reflected in the Governor's Budget Proposal. And now I'm going to hand off to Ajita, who's going to go deeper into the goal-setting itself and the goals that we've landed on for student outcomes and enrollment.
Slide. We talked a little bit last time about the context for the goal-setting and the context in which we're doing our work, and specifically, we've learned much more about the realities facing current prospective students, how they're being affected by the pandemic and rising unemployment, and how our work actually needs to shift in response to that. This context is very integral to how we define our vision and strategy for the college. Calbright's mission is fundamentally, at its most basic level, to be responsive to these evolving needs of both our focused learners and the job market. It defines us. It's why we were created, and it is how we know what we need to be doing now. So when we think about our vision, we require a vision that reflects the realities of what people are experiencing and respects and reflects those realities in how we develop our new models, as well as how we measure our successes. And, and the base, basic thing to take away from that is defined against the goals of our learner. Next slide. The specific goals for presentation and discussion today are aimed at really being ambitious, informed by the data that we see out there, and sustainable to help support growth for the college in a way that maintains a high-quality trajectory for us. They guide Calbright to stay nimble and adaptable to the changing conditions and to prioritize the needs of current and prospective students, really dedicating ourselves to both quality on balance with growth. They are informed by our initial experiences in startup mode, the implications of new data that deepen our understanding of the economic and life realities of our focused learners, and the state's uncertain economic outlook. They are also based on the assumption of stable state funding and achieved by learning and improving and collaborating as the way we do our work to get to scale. Next slide. To determine the goals, particularly the growth on enrollment, we, we took stock in the fact that we were doing something that really hadn't been done before. There were useful reference points that could be applied in the context of what we were setting out to do, and we went through a very lengthy and intensive process as a college to, to try to uncover more of those. We dug deeply into the best available comparison points, which I will just say are limited, but we use this to underpin our ambitious, yet practical goals. And where we landed on this was to, to really consider enrollment from the point in time we are at the start of 2021, which is just over 500 students, a steady clip of 500 students that we've maintained, towards a goal at the end of the four-year period to reach and enroll 5,200 learners. And I want to talk about the 5,200 learners in the context of an important reference point for us. We looked at a number of different colleges, especially those with CPE programs, and the, the closest comparison to doing what we're having to doing, to build something from the ground up that is competency-based, that is self-paced, and that is in the public sector. We look to WGU as, and in the key milestone and progress points that they achieved in their, in the building of their college. And when we look at WGU specifically, we see that they reach enrollments of 5,000 about seven years after launch. We plan to do it faster, and we also want to think about it in the context of the differences in the types of programs that we're offering and the way that, in particular, focused learner, we have, which is slightly different than the WGU population. For us, it's not enough to actually just hit enrollment targets. It is critical to us, because of the purpose of, of what we are designed to do, that we reach effectively our focused learner population. When we look at what the current community college system, our sister colleges, produce collectively, we see that about 42% of students that are adult students is the system's share of enrollments. And at Calbright, we will know that we are doing, doing well at this point in time, when we see 75% of our students come from, from that focused population. We want to think about things that in the context of also the kind of institution we are as a community college, an open enrollment institution. We don't screen anybody out, but we can have a goal for effectively reaching our, our, the students that we're most focused on, the communities that we're focused on. And that is, is a core part of how we define our success as a college. Next slide. Our completion goals, as I mentioned, are, are set to honor the goals that our students set for their progress. This is, this is perhaps the most important thing about Calbright's flexible and self-paced model. It's also to, to take stock of how the higher education system overall, how community, community colleges overall do with this population of learners, related to particularly programs that are certificate programs in nature. And so we took a look at the data that existed primarily federally, but also in comparison to Western Governors universities, to judge ourselves against what would be an aggressive but achievable place for us to, to focus. And when we look at that, we reach 1,000 students that have completed a program at that point in 2023, at the end of the vision period. This number includes students who enroll this year and next, and we won't see the enrollments from 2023 in these numbers, largely because they wouldn't have had time to complete within the vision period. We would see the effects of that completion in, in the coming year or two years after that. It also recognizes that our students are under tremendous pressure, and there's a great amount of uncertainty in terms of when that pressure will be alleviated. To give you a context of how we are thinking about that completion goal in relation to what, what undercounts that, underpins that number, we're seeking to do better than what the current, current system does. And when we look at nationally, what the three-year completion rate is for independent community college students, a population that's more like our student population than anything else, we see that it is three, three times what that, that rate is, that that rate is about 6%. And we're looking at a window of 12 months with the understanding that many of our students will be on their own self-paced journey and will be navigating a number of things that we want to support them through. On the labor market outcome side, part of this has to consider how quickly the economy recovers from the pandemic and how that'll affect the labor market for Calbright students in all Californians. With the level of economic uncertainty that we have, we set a range for how many students have attained a positive labor market within six months of completing Calbright programs at the end of 2023, much like the measurement in current workforce programs. And here, we see a range of between 200 and 450 students that have attained a positive labor market outcome within that six years of program completion. Positive outcomes include things like employment advancement and increased compensation. And we, we particularly want to focus on these guideposts to understand how we are doing, not just relative to what's currently being measured in higher education, but even beyond these metrics, collecting better data as we go to, as we measure different successful labor market outcomes in the ways that people are actually experiencing the hiring market. So in some cases, a positive labor market outcome can look different for different people. In some cases, it's gaining the new skills you need to keep the current job that you have. Sometimes it is transferring to, from a declining field to a growing field, and sometimes it is moving from unemployment or underemployment into a decent jobs, in addition to promotions and compensations. And a couple of examples of this are really when we look at, in the healthcare system, what the, what the growing needs in allied health professions are, are the need for trauma-informed care for, for healthcare providers that are both on the front lines of care, but also operating within the context of anything that is patient-facing. And here, providing those workers with the training that's needed to, to be successful in their jobs and improve the quality of care becomes a really important outcome in the labor market. In other cases, as we'll talk about in the second presentation, we're moving from different ways in which businesses are operating and new skills requirements that are being defined as a result of that. So when we take somebody who has been in-person in retail sales and need to transition them to a different kind of tech role, as increasingly the, the sales occurs in, in digital contexts using technology in those kind of higher-tech capacities. Next slide. Part of what we talked about the last time, and I want to punctuate here too, is that when we think about how we accomplish these goals, it speaks also to the impact of Calbright beyond even what happens with our it speaks also to the impact of Calbright beyond even what happens with our learners. As we strive to do this work differently and as we strive to reach these goals, these numerical goals that we set, we also do so in a way that uncovers greater value for serving this population throughout our public community college system, throughout our workforce system. And part of how we accomplish both the building of the programs, both the engagement with the labor market, is through greater collaboration with our sister colleges in the system, with key economic development organizations, with employers, with industry sector organizations, and with labor organizations, and also in the way that we structure ourselves internally from the perspective of how our faculty, staff, and student representation support that collaboration across roles and divisions. Next slide. We have also set for ourselves a set of key operational goals that support how we build our capacity, how we, how we approach program design, and how we strengthen the user experience and ready ourselves as a college to, to continue to grow on this trajectory and on this pathway. Next slide. And finally, I think the, the other goals are also based on how we reach key milestones in the process ahead of schedule to help us continue to, to continue to move beyond even what our goals are that have been, that have been, that we've set for the college. So moving towards accreditation and securing accreditation, unlocking access to student financial aid that helps our students attend, sharing and transparently what we are learning and what has proven to be effective for the strategies that emerge from our work with students, and how we continue to demonstrate the value of what we're doing to other stakeholders and to policymakers as we continue our progress. So I'll stop there, and I would love to open it up for questions.
Before we do that, I just want to recognize that trustee Grande is with us so that we can include her. Okay, so are there, are there any questions? And I'm going to ask our vice president to help me see the hands or the questions, please. Thank you. No questions? Oh, Jelena, thank you. I can always count on Jelena. Thanks, Jelena.
Thank you, President Haynes, and I apologize for my delay in being able to join. I had some technical issues. My, my system decided to restart. I was just wondering if there's any particular reason why we keep tethering ourself to the WGU concept of credit degree completion rather than maybe finding another similarly situated non-credit entity like ourselves that's trying to be, I mean, a trailblazer in an area that doesn't have a lot of competition right now?
Yes, it's a great question, and I'll just say, we rely on WGU for certain, certain milestones, certain development points from this vantage point, from the fact that they actually built the college from the ground up. We don't actually look at their, you know, their degrees and their, the particular completion outcomes that they are doing. We adjust our numbers to sort of reflect the uniqueness of the models. So that's one reference point that we relied on, and that's, that's very much about when you start from a piece of paper into building an operational college, what are the sort of key steps that you have to take? And how do you manage quality growth in the context of that? So we kind of relied on WGU as an example of that. We did look at about, you know, close to 30 institutions that offer CPE programs to look at some of the things like metrics. And I will plainly tell you, there is not a great amount of, of data or measurement around these population-specific approaches that are, that is really unique to Calbright and really unique to what we've seen out there in post-secondary education. And so we look at performance in the current system and the data and the metrics that are being used, and those are things that people will want us to report on and will report on those. But really, the, the virtue of what we're doing and the importance of what we're doing, it will be in the other measurements that we have to capture for our own institutional quality and performance, and also because it actually reflects the diversity of what we're doing with this population of learners, right? When I talk about things like the labor market outcomes and I point to things like, you know, being able to capture somebody moving from an hourly job to a job that has benefited, from an hourly job to a good job, or somebody getting to keep the job that they have because they were able to upscale with the opportunity that we presented to them, that's data that we need to collect. It's a richer dataset. It reflects more of the diversity of outcomes that are, that are, that real people experience. But it, but higher education hasn't really caught up with it. And the limitations on the workforce side, and you'll hear Stuart talk about this a little bit too later in his, his piece, it doesn't reflect that. So I think the answer is, you know, a couple of things. One is, we have to look at, you know, we look at certificate completion, we compare it to community colleges, we look at the closest approximation to our student population, which is that independent student population, but it's imperfect. And it, the, the low, low rates of performance, I think, are an important indicator that there's something missing in how we're supporting these populations across what we're doing in conventional education generally. And I think it's a big area of contribution that we will have going forward. So we are, we are not confused about the differences between WGU and us, but we do think they provide an important reference point as we think about, you know, all of the different operational pieces that have to be in place, all of the things that we have to do, like accreditation, Title IV eligibility, all these sorts of compliance-related milestones that are, that, that allow us to structure ourselves or prepare ourselves for particular types of growth and exchange. It's not to replicate their model.
Since you mentioned there were about 30 other institutions, are there any other non-credit, non-fee-based, competency-based education institutions that we were able to use as a comparable?
So there is, again, like, there's not a lot of good data out there. We looked at, we look at some aspects of other institutions for some things. So we've looked at things like Sinclair Community College, which is probably the closest, but they have been around for over 100 years and then started CDE at a particular point in time within the context of that. So there is, there's very limited things, limited things out there in terms of that organizational building piece and that new model development piece. And the metrics that we relied on for looking at outcomes in particular, we use, we use as a reference point for things, you know, metrics that are, that are measuring the focus population that we're serving and that capture certificate outcomes, so that, you know, the similar type of outcome. But, and those are, those are really low, and we know we have to blow past that. We know we have to exceed what's currently being, being done in addition to having new ways of measuring what we're doing in those kinds of self-paced programs. It's, it's very limited.
Are there other questions from, from trustees? Tom?
Hi, thanks. Yeah, I have, I have several questions. Starting with the WGU, I, I think that is a good comparison, you know, to use, but they also offer bachelor degrees, right?
Yes.
And so what, what part of their operation is, is doing these competency-based, you know, certificate-type stuff?
They're not doing, they're not, they're, they're, all their programs are, you know, are masters, they're, or they're, they're bachelors, and they're a group, they, they, they have a little bit of selection to what they do as an institution, and not an open-access institution like community colleges, which is why we don't rely on them primarily for thinking about the certificate outcomes. We more rely on them to give us a reference point for, for, for scaling trajectory. And that's part of why we, we can accelerate our timeline comfortably, knowing we're not doing the four-year degree programs or the master's programs. That's not what we're building. We're building something unique and distinct, but making accommodation for our population of learners. So, you know, it is, is it, do I wish there was better data and better comparison points? Absolutely. Do I think we're pulling the right things from WGU and accounting for areas where there are differences? Also, yes.
Okay, my next question is about financing. I saw that you, you were assuming stable $15 million a year in funding. And I was wondering, if it were $20 million a year, as originally proposed, would that materially change the goals that, that you're setting here?
I think absolutely. I think, you know, we, when we think about how we're sustainably building the organization, we, we, we have to think about it in terms of especially capacity for ongoing staffing, you know, increasing the ranks of our faculty, all of those types of considerations that, that we can expand our footprint on if we have a greater number of ongoing resources.
Okay, and my next question was about the completion rate. You know, I noted in the presentation, you say that it's three times what others have achieved. It still seems extremely low to me.
I agree. I agree.
And I, I would hope that we could, you know, since we're innovative and have this wonderful team, that, that we could do better than, than 18%. I don't know, it just seems too low a goal.
Hey, I have the same reaction to it, and, you know, we had, we had trouble with, with this one for that reason, where when you look at it, it, it seems, you know, it seems, as you say, low. And what the important difference, a couple of different differential things, do we want to exceed that? Absolutely. Do we think we can? We certainly hope so. But part of the difficulty in the measurement is we're counting students who complete within that kind of 12-month timeframe based on a self-paced program. And so, you know, three times what the national, that national average is within a three-year period, because that 6% is within a three-year period. So the shortened timeframe for window, the tripling of the success rate is part of what we think is a reasonable place for us to start, given the amount of uncertainty that we're noticing around our learner population in particular. So I think there's a combination of things that, that led us to lead the benchmark in that way. But do we think, we, you know, will we do everything in our power institutionally to try to exceed that? Absolutely.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, but I, I still would like to think we could set a, a more aggressive goal. And, and I'd just like you to kind of take that back and think about it. And maybe it's not within one year, but within, you know, it's, it's within some other timeframe. But, but of the number of students who enroll, you, I would like to think that more of them will complete, you know, if we're going to have 1,000 students enroll, I'd like to think that more of them complete than, than just that percentage that's in your. Something we control a little better, you know, like, I, I think the, the, the employment metrics are more difficult for us to control because that depends, you know, a lot on what's happening out there in the real world. But the completion rate is something that we do have more control over, and it seems to me like that, that should be a really top priority to make that as, as effective as possible. And just, and my last question just was on the collaboration with the other colleges. I noted that there's no, no quantifiable goal for that or for any of the other collaborations that you're talking about. And I, I guess I'd just like to hear a little bit more about what, what the strategy is with the other colleges. I know we've signed a few agreements with several of them. And is the plan to just, to do these agreements, you know, kind of one at a time or regionally or whatever? Or is there a plan to do something for all the colleges at once? That, that could be a specific outcome that we're looking for?
So I, I think it's the, the former rather than the latter. I think the, the, the way that we have approached this is with, with a very open door. So I think we are looking for institutions that share purpose around defining new ways of supporting the learner populations that we're talking about. And this example of the Department of Defense grant that I spoke of is, is a good example of the types of collaborations that we're talking about, and we'll talk about a couple of other ones in the next presentation. But in, in that context, you know, it is inviting in 10 other community colleges to work with us in, within this industry, within this context around this particular set of work-based learning outcomes. And I think that is the, that is the nature of how we would anticipate other community colleges could work together with us. The other way, which is coming up through, as we identify common challenges that the system is facing. So a lot of the conversations that I've had with, with many system leaders at different, at different sister colleges has been around things like the CCC application process. And in that case, you know, what collaboration looks like is a shared set of understanding of what would collectively help us all streamline that process in a way that allows us to see less of a drop-off for these populations of learners throughout the application process. So the, you know, best defined by example, but it always in the context of, you know, keeping the door open and working with institutions, not to just share best practices and the way we work, but to really do more in-depth work together around solving some of these key challenges facing different learner populations.
Is there a way to quantify any of the goals there in the collaboration section? Because, you know, there are none in the slide that you put up there. And it seems to me that it's, it's a more effective plan if there are some metrics that, that are more quantifiable.
We can, I mean, I, I don't, I think we can do that, you know, with 10, 15, 20 partnerships. I think all are in the reasonable space. And I think the, I think for us, it's just a matter of, of keeping that door open and of having institutions who want to work together with us on this participate. Now, we're, we're happy to do that together, and, you know, regional contexts and local contexts have been a part of how we've, we've gotten that collaborative start. So I don't, I don't have a concern about putting numerical numbers in. I'm not sure that checking off the box on those numbers actually defines the impact of what that work actually generates for us as a system. But, but, you know, I think we're, we're certainly open to doing that way because that is just the way that we're going to be working.
I understand. I mean, it could also take a look at the employer stuff and even, even the collaborative, you know, government, you know, there could be specific things you could throw in there that, that are measurable that, that would be more, you know, just more addictive than some of the qualities that you have there. Then.
Well, Vice President Costa, you have a question?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, ma'am. I have questions and comments, so I'll try to do them in an orderly fashion. And some of it's going to dovetail off of Tom's comments, which is, you know, one of the things that the statute provides was for kind of a best practices sharing model between Calbright and the colleges. And so when you say collaboration, that really is, I think, probably more important to me than individual agreements. Not to dismiss those individual agreements, but I think having kind of this body of work to share system-wide is really important. And along that same line of thought on slide 13, and I'd be interested in your thoughts and Stuart's on economic development efforts. You know, the goals there are really operational goals because this happens at a regional level, but I also think that there should be some strategic goals for Calbright. You know, there are going to be federal and state pushes to get us out of the recession through economic development efforts. And I do think we have very unique data. I think we have data that's happening in real time. And in addition to kind of operationalizing those, I would hope that there would be a goal about really becoming a thought leader in this space and sharing data on the statewide and national level, kind of outside of the regional pockets, right?
Yes.
And then lastly, on Tom's comments about completion, and, you know, clearly we have a goal about equity, but I'm curious about your thoughts about completion specifically and what are our goals, if any, around ensuring there are achievement gaps amongst different student demographics?
One is, I think, by concentrating first on ensuring that there's equity and who comes in the door, and then focusing on the quality of their experience, the support for their progression. We see that move the dial, those activities move the dial in terms of outcomes in ways that allow us to demonstrate models that are equity-based models that can be applied for, in, in other contexts with, with other programs at other institutions. And so I, I think the completion outcome will absolutely reflect, you know, a population that I would never characterize this way, but people often characterize as harder to serve, unlikely to see positive outcomes. You know, there's a very deficit mindset around these populations. And I think when you look at the composition of completion for us, based on who will, who we are aiming to bring in the door, you will see, you know, we begin to chip away at that deficit mindset, and we begin to demonstrate the real potential on the outcome. and we begin to demonstrate the real potential on the out, for, for the outcomes of learners who, you know, who find themselves in these different circumstances.
Well, I just want to be clear on one point, though, for me personally, which is that if, you know, we get an eighteen percent overall completion rate, but I see that the average of that is, you know, twelve percent for Caucasian students and ten percent for of color, I'm not going to consider that successful. I want to make sure.
I am, I don't either. And we, we are happy to be explicit about that.
Are there any other questions from our trustees? Then I, I just want to add a couple of things. One of them is in response, well, let me start off with, with the, the map. I was absolutely intrigued by the map. One, it was, I, I mean, just trying to sort of understand it. And I, so I think it's really critically important. That's something I believe, as, as Amy shared, and I think Tom did, that, that we need to continue to sort of share that, that kind of perspective and make certain that our sister colleges are as aware in sort of real time, some of the things that we're learning. So that's, that's, that's one thing. And I think that, that, that map is, is sort of reflective of the kind of work that Calbright is doing that our traditional, our, our colleges may not have that kind of information or maybe, or maybe spending time on that when we can, can provide it. So as we're, as we're pushing out this new data, we need to make certain that, 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 that we can be cognizant that there are others in our system that might benefit for that, from that. Especially since with regard to workforce, there are what, twelve regions? That are, that, one of their goals is to be looking at that, that data. And so, so that's important. The, the other has to do with completion. And, and so let me just say that I, I absolutely agree with what Amy has just said. And I, and I've actually said it from the, the dais of my, the, the, the board I serve on as a trustee. If, 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 if we're not closing the achievement gap for those students who are historically and disproportionately impacted, then we are not successful. And so everybody is supposed to be on that page, but it, well, it really is in the strategies that we're using and the intentionality of what we are doing and in, and in, I'm, I'm not, solutions is not the right way, word. The intentionality of the actions and the steps that we are taking that gets us there. But with that, I, I just want to speak to completion because I, I recognize that we, we are looking at that. We still are use, we, we're using that term. And what I'm about to say is that everyone is looking at completion. Every one of our sister colleges is looking at completion and they're looking at relative to, to students under their purview around that. But I believe that we have, and I guess this is where I agree with Tom. We have an opportunity, given our complete, I, I think we are much more focused on, on that. The board is, is focused on that. What we're trying to do is focused on that. But I also want our, my colleagues to, to understand that that completion is just really hard for, for this population of students. We, and, and I think as a result, many of our traditional colleges are looking at, that they continue to look at full-time, first-time students. And while they, while forty percent of our students are not, they're part-time and they tend to be students of color, it, it becomes a real challenge. Completion is hard. And I think if we are, continue to be intentional about completion, it's important. But we also understand, we also need to make certain that we are creating strategies around how do we make it easier? So we have to listen to our students that are coming into this program on what it is that they need to be successful. And then, and I think that Calbright is doing that, so I'm not suggesting that we're not. But completion in and of itself as a goal has to be followed by strategies and actions and activities that, that we're hearing and we're, and we are, we are making those adjustments on behalf of the students who are actually in these programs. So I just wanted to, to add that part to this comp, this, this conversation about completion. Other questions? Oh, Gita, you certainly can respond.
No, I, I, I think it is absolutely a, a complex set of things to figure out. And I, I think the way that I've been looking at this is, we, we want to, we want to blow past what currently happens to these students when they often come into the higher education system to do, to do significantly better. I think at the same time, the way that the metrics currently often are defined, right? Within a time window is, it has to be taken on balance in a self-paced program with what that student's goals are. And, and the key to that is not that they're just lost somewhere in the shuffle between if they didn't get counted at the twelve-month mark or, or if, or, or otherwise. I mean, I think it is really just about making sure that we are providing and, and understanding what exactly point in time is happening to those students in that kind of progression cycle. And then we have to be able to ask and answer the question for ourselves. Are we doing everything institutionally possible to support them on their goal? And that is where not just the strategies, but holding ourselves to account and measures of institutional effectiveness that we're starting to get into with our efforts around accreditation and just in terms of strengthening the operations. Those become the really rich understanding we have of whether we're doing a good job or not. And those are the things that we can share greater insights about to the benefit of other institutions who are trying to figure out these questions for their students. Not just term by term, based on standardized metrics, which we'll of course report on. But underneath that, do we have a, an understanding of what is happening to our students? And at the point at which we can intervene for a particular group of students who are a particular point of their progression? And do we do those things? Do we augment ourselves? Do we change ourselves? Do we, do we, you know, check the efficacy of our strategies? Do we attempt to intervene in new and different ways? That's what we're set up to do.
Thank, oh. Tom, you have another question?
Yeah, but just, I completely agree with everything that Pam and Amy said. And I guess just to put a really fine point on it, that if our resources are limited in such a way that having more enrollment is an impediment to having more people complete, I'd rather have less enrollment and more completers. And like, so that we can surround the ones that are making progress to make sure they get over the finish line, rather than expend a bunch of energy on, you know, maximizing enrollment of people that maybe will never finish. So I guess that's, that's the point, I guess, I'm trying.
You, you hit the nail on the head for me. That's, that's exactly the two pieces we're also trying to balance and think about. So I will, will definitely take back the, the piece around, you know, our assumptions around the, that, that kind of what, who completes in what in twelve months. But, but it's exactly right. That's exactly the two pieces. How do you, how do you keep a steady clip on growth in, in relation to and in line with capacity? But focusing the whole time on the quality of what we're doing to influence those outcomes. It's exactly right.
Just want to add that I, I support what trustee Epstein just said. I think it's important to, you know, that we have supported, prepared and valued learners going out into the workforce. If there's a few less of them, I think it's still, because again, you know, what we're doing, we have the ability to learn so much and to telegraph that information to the other colleges. And it's also equally as important what, what we're telegraphing to the employment community. So a few less and better prepared, I think. And, and we have the flexibility to apply those resources to the population in a way that, you know, really no one else does. The, the advantage of where we are and being able to say, we recognize, you know, that these are supports we didn't heretofore know about, but it's vitally important and a success rate. So we have the ability to do that and tell that story, which I think is so important.
Thank you. And I have one, just one other observation that I forgot to mention. The, the, the reference to WGU needs to be very specific because for, for many in, in our system and otherwise, in terms of constituency groups, it's a hot-button item. And so your clarification was right on. And looking at it, but I, I think you have a broader audience than just us when you use that reference. And so if you will make certain you put capstones around how you are using it with more specificity, I think it would go a long way. It'll go a ways. I'm not so certain if it's a long ways. But thank you so much for this presentation. If there's no other questions, I'm going to move to the consent item under section three. So do any committee members wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion? Or separate a vote? Seeing none, is there, I guess I should ask if, somebody's going to tell me. Do, do we have any public comment on the strategic vision before I move?
President Haynes, we don't have any public comment.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. So is there any, I don't see any members raising their hand for any changes. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Ms. Cruz?
I was giving attendees just a second, but no, I do not see any public comment on the consent agenda.
Okay, so I can take a motion and, and a second on this item?
So moved.
All second.
Okay, moved by Epstein and second by Perry. Would you please call the roll? Hildegard Aguinaldo?
Aye.
Amy Costa?
Aye.
Tom Epstein?
Aye.
Jelena Grande?
Aye.
Pam Haynes?
Aye.
Jennifer Perry? And Bill Rawlings?
Aye.
So that, um, that item is taken care of and has been passed. So the next, excuse me. Okay, so the next item is our action items. So that's under section, section four. So let's begin with item four point one with, which is an overview presentation and it's also an action item regarding transition to technology of course outlines of record for two courses. And Ms. Sandburn and Mr. Knox, would you please introduce this item?
Great. Thank you, President Haynes and Vice President Costa. And thank you, Board of Trustees, other members of the board. Excited to have a great conversation and listening to your last conversation, which this really drives that work. And it's new, it's exciting. This is some of the main reasons I came to Calbright Community College is because of this level of activity for which Ajita has brought to Calbright. I've had a very successful career over twenty-six years in workforce and economic development, seven years with the Community College District. But this work that we're doing now is much needed and it's innovative in its approach. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. I'm going to share the presentation with Amira as well and with Pam. Pam will have your action item at the end of the presentation.
Denzel, can you pass me the screen sharing?
One moment.
I just hope nobody has a cat image that they're going to use, at least of them, while we're waiting.
Exactly. Let's hope not. It looks like you have it, Amira, now, so. Great, thank you. So with that, I am your Vice President of Workforce Strategy and Innovation. And it's also the title of what we're doing today. This is Skills Clustering and Pilot Program. Again, excited to talk about the new strategy for which we are moving towards in the Calbright Community College. And with that, next slide, Amira. So if there's a way to do it better, let's find it. Thomas Edison, and I think this is really key to what we've talked about a little bit. And I loved President Hand's, your comment about the data map because we've all spent hours on really looking at data and information and how we can do better at what we do today. Calbright launched in 2019, as you know, with three programs, medical coding, IT support, cyber secure, cybersecurity in a healthy economy. This is when we were at about three point nine percent unemployment for the state of California. And we had a couple of counties that have always gone into the double digits, but for the most part, we were at a very low unemployment rate. The potential of those economic conditions informed the design of Calbright's early start. Next slide. You can see the path. Within one year, the global pandemic has had. Learners like ours were disproportionately affected by the pandemic and we turned our attention inward. We've examined how learners were progressing and where they were getting stuck. We have learned the experience, improved communications, restructured the pathways so the students could get to their destinations faster. We have also identified a major barrier, one that had equity implications, and that is the CC apply. So we are working on some other innovative practices to, to overcome some of those issues. Next slide. The economy also has changed to how employers are hiring and, and what conditions. Under these new economic conditions, we've conducted deeper research to understand what employers were experiencing. We learned that there were indeed opportunities, but we would need to change our model. Today's presentation showcases what we have learned and more thoughtful model for engaging with employers and their employees as well. Next slide. So with the economic shifts, and so we've all been, I've been doing this for, like I said, twenty-six plus years. We've seen some economic shifts over the years, nothing like what we've seen with the pandemic, the rise in unemployment. It's such a quick rate, but we've also seen recessions where the most hard, hard, hardest to serve and hardest impacted over the years, and not to use the hardest served, underserved populations, is that we've also seen that they have, they have the biggest struggle to get out of those economic conditions. So that's always a challenge. And so we really need to think about that. The business landscape has changed as well. That's one of the bigger changes within the last thirty years. We'll recognize that the new technology and business concepts have drastically changed nearly in every industry. A lot of folks call this the industrial revolution four point O, where IT just is infused in everything we do. We're using a fairly large amount of capacity today, just during Zoom calls. I've had to learn a whole new Google side of the house for which I came from Office 365. All of that is thread throughout everything we do within an industry. So this shift has created a massive demand in the talent marketplace for skills that underpin those changes. Like technological expertise, creativity and human connection, we too have to change. So with that, we've really started in the information technology and healthcare. Ajita brought up the advanced manufacturing side for which we're also looking at how IT is infused or threaded throughout advanced manufacturing. That will be some next steps. But for now, information technology and healthcare are the core building blocks. To build programming that is effective, responsive models and post-secondary education have to engage with broader industry ecosystems. And we'll look at that a little bit more today and what we're talking about there. We strive to understand each industry from every lens by listening to employers, economic development and civic organizations, technology vendors, labor unions, advocacy groups, again, we want that worker voice as well, and local and regional workforce boards. We explore broad trends in order to discover opportunities, but this isn't solely about engaging stakeholders. It's about creating a space to test and scale only what works. So again, it's not just, it's that nexus, it's, it's how all of it infuses together and then what we can change as we move forward within the marketplace. Next slide. So our approach, so we really start with the discovery side. And it's kind of what board member Epstein and Costa talked about. It's kind of the economic development, it's the employer side, really thinking about what their needs are, looking at data, analyzing the labor market data, analyzing the employer data, Dunn and Bradstreet, looking at what growth industries are taking effect and how we can mobilize resources around that and the skills that are going to be necessary there. The next part is synthesis of that information and really developing strategies and then becomes the co-creation. So we start with the end in mind. As we bring new programs and services online, we focus on solving for what doesn't currently work for people in education and in the employer marketplace. Labor market data can help identify the broad trends. But when it comes to understanding skills needed on the job, the best data comes from the actual employees. And that's what Amira will talk a little bit about next too. But working through the employer partner, we have talked with employees to better understand what makes them successful in their jobs. So again, we're trying to understand when they became employed at that employer, what were the skills that were necessary and what were they missing? We also observed their mindsets, delved into their other factors outside or just technical training that helped them in their careers. And then I also do want to say that also working with our faculty as part of that connection. So a new program, so this is what the exciting parts of what we're developing and how we're developing. We continue to examine where technology is transforming work. And as I mentioned before, it's everywhere, it's throughout everything that we currently do. Students of today are going to be, I mean, so much better at technology than we are today. But how do we also take that information and take that to a 45-year-old, a 55-year-old? I'll be 53 in a couple of weeks. How do we understand what we're doing and understanding what the employer's needs are? We need to look at new on-ramps and interchanges. Can be created for adults without degrees? We are focused on those who face the greatest risk of economic displacement. The results of our effort is launching a new set of pathways focused specifically on quickly transitioning displaced workers into entry points in the technology sector. So the transition to technology, the new program you'll discuss today and hopefully approve, Customer Relationship Management Platform Administration will be our first new offering of 2021 and in the first of series of programs utilizing this strategy as we've discussed today. And with that, I'm going to turn it to Amira for this exciting next part of the presentation. Amira is a great thought leader, amazing at data. I love data people because I get, as, as Amira and I say, we get geeked out and spend hours looking at it and trying to understand it and trying to delve into it. So with that, Amira, I'll let you get started on slide seven.
Yes. So guys, yes, as, thank you Stuart, and as he mentioned, I have spent my life analyzing data. But today I'm actually going to be presenting research that's based on a different research concept. This is based in the concept of human-centered design. And this is where we sit and we do the painstaking work of interviewing and learning from people. It is a way to create human connection in everything that we do. I want to talk a little bit about, you know, in Ajita's presentation, she talked about her North Star. She talked about this, about this woman named Monica that is a student with us. In this day, you know, as we're sitting behind our screens, it's hard to have that human connection. I also kind of lucked out because early in my work, I was working with one of our analysts at Calbright. And she had an aunt that had lost her job. Her aunt worked as in shipping and receiving at a warehouse in, in retail and clothing. And she lost her job and she went to get her unemployment and she needed a resume. Unfortunately, since she'd been working so long, she didn't know how to grade a resume. In fact, she didn't even have a computer. So naturally she reached out to her niece, our analyst, and I'm going to call this person Estrella, which means star in Filipino. And Estrella reached out to her niece to help her create a resume and her niece asked her a bunch of questions. And what her niece recognized was Estrella couldn't even recognize what skills she already possessed that would help her get that job. In fact, she asked her about whether she had created a process. And you'll see later on in my presentation, this is actually one of the in-demand skills that our employers are asking for. She didn't even know she possessed it. When I started this work, I started thinking about people like Estrella, about people like Monica, about the people that we met in the focus groups in the research that you guys have seen that Census has presented to us in past meetings. I started to think about the people that are in our focus areas. And we wanted to figure out, how do we take the people who are in our focus area and get them these jobs? The jobs that our employer partner has, the employer partner, the jobs that the employer partner wants to fill. And we really didn't just look at what skills were in demand. We also looked at, how do we get our students into those jobs? So as I move into this presentation, I want to tell you some of the first things we learned. First, the first thing we learned is cultivating a growth mindset is more important than technical training. When we met the people, the people that we interviewed, we realized all of them had a growth mindset. And many of them had set aside the time to continue learning. And this was very, very important because the skills were changing, not just like every year, every couple of years. The skills were actually changing every few months. So they had to make sure that they were learning. In fact, some of them had actually set up sort of a collegiate competition between what they could learn, which actually brought us to me, brought me to my next point, which is that successful employees were actually leveraging a community. They had a community that was around both learning and the career development. We heard a lot about these near-peer mentorship programs. And yes, some employers actually had specific programs that they had onsite. However, some other people were just, you know, they were able to use the resources that they had, the thing that you and I just simply called friendships. In fact, one of the people that we met, he, when we asked him, hey, how did you learn about, you know, learning in this, in the context of what we were asking? How did you learn about Salesforce? And he said, I just asked my friends and they said, there's this new thing and you should learn it. In contrast though, we actually met a woman who fit our demographic purpose perfectly. She was from San Bernardino, California. Her parents were immigrants and working class. She actually worked as a caregiver 35 hours a week while she went to community college and then graduated from the community, the California universities. When she showed up for the first day on the job, she actually had no idea what Salesforce was. She didn't have anyone to ask. We have to think about how we can create these communities around our students because those communities are going to take them beyond just what we teach them. They're going to take them beyond into the work world. We also learned that soft skills need to be contextualized for the job. As I explained with Estrella, we, we recognized that she already had some skills that she could utilize that maybe if she learned a couple of other things, she could utilize in this other space. Similarly, the managers and trainers at our employer partner were really impressed with this person who used to be a fitness trainer. So there was a woman who was a fitness trainer and she learned coding and she really took off. And her, her career advancement, in her career advancement, she actually ended up working in change management. Change management has a lot of the same skill sets that a fitness trainer would have. Because now you're not training people as a fitness trainer, you're training people on new technologies. So we have to actually teach people that they have these skills, but then recontextualize them for the environment that they're in. And finally, this is my favorite one. If you can use a smartphone, you can work in technology. This has a lot of implications. First, we learned we have to help people develop the confidence that they can actually work in technology. I've worked in technology all my life and trust me, there's a lot of scary words, but they're not actually that scary. In fact, the employer explained to us that data management was an incredibly important thing that we needed to teach everyone. However, they said, you know, teach it in spreadsheets, how to organize, how to organize data in spreadsheets is far more accessible and understandable to most people. And when I thought about my own career in data analysis, this is indeed actually how I learned data analysis on the job. I first learned spreadsheets, then I learned all the other fancy stuff much later. But knowing how to work with data was what got me my start. And this is actually what we learned from some of the employees also, who had said that, you know, there was a lot easier ways to, to teach people some of the, some of these skills. Another one was teaching people coding. Again, making it accessible, making it, you know, focusing on things like logic and visual tools that you can use that make it really easy and focusing on some of the areas that, some of the technologies and apps that teach coding to, say, people in K-12. Those same technologies can be used to teach adults. So with, with this, we learn there are some additional things that we needed to, to help our learners with. And one of the biggest ones was actually preparing them for work. Both President Menon and Stuart, you know, talked about how the environment has really changed, the economic shifts that are happening. And what we realized that our learning and our support need to be well-integrated. And our support system needs to work alongside our curriculum to help, to help students actually land jobs in, in this new work environment. So when we look at it, we think of it more as building blocks. So as an example, so the first thing we would want to do is actually lay down these integrated career services and make that integral throughout the whole program. So this is really important because when we think about, when I think about the people that I heard in the focus groups, one of the key things was all they were thinking about was jobs. A lot of them had lost their job and a lot of them had children or they had, you know, they had, they had to put food on the table. So an immediate idea for them isn't, I need to get the skills to gain a career. The immediate thing for them is, I need a job. So we need to actually be able to contextualize our skills within the job context. And as part of that, we have the next building block then, which is these contextualized skills competencies. Our focus is to build these within the CBE framework. That's incredibly important for us. And that we will actually look at a development of a rich, a rich database, doing more and more interviews just like this to really understand what employees are looking for in order to get people into that job. And finally, we're still offering industry-recognized certifications. That's still an important component and that will occur alongside some of these other components. So as you see with these building blocks, we can create a more full and holistic program for, for our students' needs. Now I want to take a look at how this looks in context. So Pam is going to be talking a lot more about the actual program, but I'm going to give you a little bit of a synopsis. So in the Career Skills Navigation, the, the transition to tech program actually will give people just an idea of what the tech skills are that they need. I want you to imagine someone who has no experience. They're going to come in and they aren't going to really understand the difference between, you know, what is this, what is this CRM? What is, what is some of that, what is agile development? There's all these questions that they may have. We want to kind of bring it down to their level and start with some career skills navigation and helping them indeed recognize that they could get a, a good job in this space. The next piece, which Pam will talk a lot more about, is some of these skills that we've recognized that employers are asking us for. This has all been validated with our employer partner, but they had asked us, hey, you know, we need people to be able to manage data. And we also need them to understand how to work in a distributed team. It's a very different balance. And, you know, in, in technology and technology shops, people work all around the world, work is happening 24/7. It doesn't really stop. And so we need to prepare people for how communications happen and how we work collaboratively, collaboratively in different teams. And we top that off with the Salesforce Administrator, Administrator certifications is one of the basic certifications that you can get from Salesforce. These are all parts of our CRM Systems Admin Program. However, we learned a lot more skills that we could provide people for maybe some different jobs. So suppose we added on something that we were, we were asked also informed was really in demand, which is this concept of automating processes, something that is generally kind of press, process management you might get a little bit more of if you're taking a business degree or an MBA. But we're talking about something that's a little bit more accessible, is like creating workflows and simple things that maybe people have actually already done on the job. We would create a program for them, a, a skill set for them that is around automating processes and add on some, the Salesforce Service Cloud Consultant Certification. That program could be maybe a business analyst program. This would be great for somebody who maybe has worked in retail and really likes to, you know, work with people. But suppose somebody kind of doesn't want to do that. Maybe they want to do something else and maybe they've really got a taste of technology and they really love it and they just want to work in it. We could add an introductory coding class, something that, you know, our employer has helped us understand how to do at a level that's very accessible and what the basics be we could provide for them are. We could top it off with the Salesforce Platform Developer One certification and then help someone become a junior developer. So as you can see, we've created something that's sort of building blocks and we've, we've created it from this rich data that we're collecting from employers. Now, we've, we're also collecting all kinds of other data, which Stuart referred to. So he's going to go on and tell, tell you a little bit more about some of the other data that we looked at to validate whether we're going in the right direction across the state.
Great, thanks, thanks, Amira. Yeah, this one's really quick, but it just basically shown you the database administrator, which is based on all of the platforms for which we've just looked at. The database administrator, and this was collected through Labor Market Information Division through EDD. So I want to thank them for a quick turnaround and a lot of information we've asked for. But approximately 10,500 jobs are available within these industries. You can see in the map, this key selected areas for which these job openings are almost six to one. And the number of certifications that are awarded in California in 2019 was less than 1,300. So, and that's, that's BA's, AA's, AS's and even private post-secondary. So obviously the demand is there. The supply side is lacking in some ways, and so we have a market to go to. Median salary depending on the location with where we sit in California, from inland, approximately 71,000 to up, and the coastal areas up to 126,000. So I mean, these are good paying jobs and there is definitely the demand in the market is there. So next slide. This slide really represents the one pathway to many jobs. And this is really what Amira was getting at, is if you look at the building blocks or the Lego set, thank you Ajita for the analogy of the Legos, is it, if we start to build on the career path for which people start to develop their strengths, that we look at their skills, we develop those skills and then we build out from there. This is why we say this is kind of the new way that we're looking at all of the jobs in one way or another. If you look at labor market information, you can start to see, especially under the database administrator, these all fall under that field. And so, you know, customer experience, Salesforce admin, these are the job openings just within each one of these many different pathways that we can develop as we start the strategy for the future. Next slide. And this one, I'm going to turn to Pam, who's just been amazing, our VP of Instruction and, and her staff, Elizabeth, with the instruction side as well. So I'll let Pam talk about how the purpose of the pilot really plays out and how much we've integrated our instruction and all of Pam's teams around this.
Thank you, Stuart. Unlike other educational institutions and vastly different from the development and launch of our initial three-program pathways, Calbright's new programs will be designed and built using a human-centered approach. Collaborating with experts from multiple areas across the college, subject matter experts and employers, Calbright's unique approach to design has many concentric phases. Our new programs will be developed and launched with smaller initial cohorts that allow us to quickly test and incorporate critical feedback from worker, learners, employers, faculty and staff. This innovation process allows us to test for effectiveness quickly so that we can manage risk and resources before we scale the program. Doing the upfront work also means we are building high-quality models that can adapt as we grow. Next slide, please. Our new series of programs will be called Transition to Technology, with our first program being Transition to Technology: Customer Relationship Management Platform Administration. Although on the surface, a program consisting of two courses may seem familiar, that is where the similarities end. The new programs will be designed with the end in mind. So all students will begin working towards employment from the very first day while mastering the soft skills and technical skills needed to be successful in the workplace. As Calbright's programs are designed to be self-paced and driven by a student's goal, students have the opportunity to move through their programs as fast as four to six months, guided through their pathway by their instructors, academic success coaches and career coaches. These new programs are designed to give a broad set of transferable skills that can be, can help individuals gain the skills needed to take on different occupational roles in industries where technology is transforming the way business works. Upon completion of the first course, Customer Relationship Management Technology, students will have the opportunity to continue their journey following three different paths. The first is to continue on to our second course, Customer Relationship Management. The first is to continue on to our second course, Customer Relationship Management Platform Administration, which leads to a certificate of competency and eligibility to earn a Customer Relationship Management Administrator Industry Recognized Credential. The second path available to students is to apply and be accepted into a paid apprenticeship with Cognizant, where they will be able to earn while they learn with the goal of full-time employment at the conclusion of Cognizant's 12-week apprenticeship program. The third path is to earn and learn at Cognizant and continued learning at Calbright. This path will allow students to benefit from all three outcomes of a certificate of competency and industry recognized credential and participation in Cognizant's paid apprenticeship. Next slide, please.
And as we mentioned before, the career integration is key to what we're doing. So this is also another part of what the new design is, which is we're integrating the career services with Celica, which is Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Board, San Bernardino, which is part of the inland empire, of course, NOVA, which is the southern or northern valley area from San Jose up to through San Mateo and Fresno, which is the part of the central valley. So we really wanted to target certain areas and work with certain local boards in this pilot to be able to integrate those career services. So pre-enrollment and post-exit career navigation and coaching services are integrated into the program model. So we're working with those four local boards who have agreed to do this with us in this pilot project. We may be looking at enrollments currently within the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act or that will be marketing to new customers that may be dislocated workers or adults within the population there. And this is the first of our pilot project with these four local boards. And we, we will continue to grow that within key industries and areas within California. Excellent. With that, I want to really thank the team, Pam's team has been amazing. Amira, as I mentioned, is our data strategy person, Laura Martinez, who keeps us on track and managing the project as it moves forward. Elizabeth couldn't have done it without our faculty. Pam will talk more about that. And just amazing thought partner there as well. Priya, our career services side, really thinking about how we develop the strategy with those career centers. Because one of the key components there is that we will have a career center person and they will have a career center person that will coach these 50-plus students through the process. And again, this is the pilot, so it's small and we will grow this out. Karen Snow, our research and planning analyst, countless hours of designing maps for us. Tamika, obviously just all of the help on the career center side and the strategic initiatives. Shamilah Johnson, faculty and counseling side. Amon, which is our dean of student success. Jamie Sarmantes, welcome services manager, which we will handhold through the process of CC Apply. And Carl Silva, Director of Information Technology. And without not thanking Salesforce and Cognizant, which is our major employer and our training side of the arms. So I really appreciate everybody's time and if there's any questions of the, if, if not, I will turn it to Pam so she can get to the portion for which you'll go through the process of approval.
So before we, before we go to Pam, this was a wonderful presentation and hopefully it will help our, our trustees and our other Board of Governors members understand what, what the, what the executive committee is voting on. Because that, this presentation really opened up what these two programs are, will be doing. So I, when I, when I ask whether there are any questions of, of my colleagues, it is one around the presentation, but also will allow Pam to explain the actual programs themselves before we, before we completely open, open it up. So Pam?
Thank you. So along with our core team and cross-functional collaborators, I especially want to thank the faculty for their participation. As a former faculty member for 17 years, I feel very blessed to have the opportunity to work alongside Calbright's faculty on the instructional team. Innovation is hard work and they enthusiastically show up every day and put their heart and souls into everything they do. I'm extremely proud of our faculty who are leading the way and creating best-in-class online CBE courses and programs. And now moving on to the course outline of records and distance education addenda that you have before you. The Customer Relationship Management CRM Platform Administration Program will consist of two courses recommended by the faculty for approval. IT 520 is Customer Relationship Management Technology and IT 525 is Customer Relationship Platform Administration. The course outlines of records with DE addenda were reviewed by all members of the curriculum committee and approved by the curriculum committee on 2/8/21. The course outlines of record with DE addenda are presented for your approval. And President Haynes, would you like me to give more details on the individual courses or have the members?
Let's have the, let's have the, the trustees ask questions and then you can certainly answer those questions in the context of one, the presentation, but then also the, the programs. So are there any questions from, from, from the trustees? I don't have a full screen in front of me. Hold on a second.
Trustee Grande has a question.
Oh, perfect. Trustee?
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the innovation that our faculty at Calbright are clearly demonstrating. And this presentation was phenomenal. I noticed that we are thanking Cognizant and Salesforce, which are two probably of our employer partners that are going to be providing the, the bulk of the employment positions for our students who complete these pathways. But I was wondering if we've had any consultation with the regional consortia chairs? And if so, what regional consortias were collaborating on this particular program proposal? And how do we think we might be able to roll it out to the other regional consortias that might not have been on the initial conversation, but might be willing to, to partner as we go forward?
Yeah, I can take that. So we have had consultation with the regional consortia. I've met with them several different occasions in, in, in different settings, all on Zoom, of course. And so we have absolutely explained we're moving in a new direction in the terms of the way we're developing strategies and pathways. They are super excited. I've met with them independently now with the tourism and trade folks because that has been impacted so heavily and they have so many dislocated workers and see how we can transition from, from tourism and trade, although we know that that entertainment side will come back. But in the meantime, we do see an opportunity there for growth and to move people into healthcare specifically. We've met with them several times on the IT components of healthcare, but also on healthcare in general, which in the future you will see some new pathways. Hopefully very soon, as I'm looking at Pam, very soon, we're working on a health, an additional healthcare path. And so we're working with them around some of that information and exchange of where the opportunities are. And, and in an IT world and manufacturing, as you, as Ajita mentioned, we've had conversations started really well right now around how we play our role within both advanced manufacturing and cybersecurity, which we already have coursework in, but also expanding that as well. So those conversations are absolutely taking place. Yes.
Thank you.
I see a hand up for trustee Aguinaldo.
Thank you very much, President Haynes. First, I wanted to thank you guys for a really phenomenal presentation. I know that it may not be the most fair thing to do to reference a presentation from a past board meeting, but at our last board meeting, we had a presentation from Census in which on slide five, they were talking about where our learners used to work and where they work now. And my initial question to you was, you know, for the folks who come from a background in retail and apparel and are seeking to work in entertainment, how do we link that to the course offerings that we have, which is information technology, healthcare and advanced manufacturing? And I think Amira hit the nail right on the head there that we're trying to recontextualize their interest into skills that are actually have, have more longer term value. So that, that was really important and key for me to understand. I guess what I'm wondering is how is that being communicated to these prospective learners? How are we saying to them, yes, you're interested in entertainment, but what I think you really mean is that you, you really want to do Salesforce. It sounds like the suite of services that, that we're seeking to offer are provided to students once, once they get in, in the door. And I'm thinking of the stage before that. So can you clarify that a little bit?
Sure. The first thing I'm going to clarify is that when you look at that data, the census data, the specific area where entertainment really came up was in the LA basin. And for this particular launch, we are not going to be focused as much on the LA basin as we are on the, the first map, the strategy map that was shown. Where the unemployment rate and the rate of high school education, I'm sorry, the, the rate of college education is lower. High school graduate, lower high school, no college degree. We'll be focused on that population and in, in, in those areas of the state. Now, there is actually, you know, what, what Stuart referred to, which is almost every, almost every industry is being changed and the entertainment industry has also changed. There will be opportunities, I think, to utilize some of these skills for people who are in that area in a very different way. And so it, it, it isn't something to not, you know, to, to think we aren't thinking about, but it is important to recognize that it, it really pops because that is a large population and a large portion of the state. But, and, and that may be what people are hearing because that's where they're located. But again, you know, in, in entertainment, there's so many additional opportunities for a person, not just maybe in what you might think of, you know, what comes to mind in entertainment.
Other questions? Tom? Oh, you're, you're.
I'm not sure this question is, is ripe at the moment, but because are, are you going to go through the, the course outlines? Or can we talk about that now?
Absolutely. You can talk about it.
Okay. The, the one question I had is I noticed that the course hours of student involvement is in one course, 30 hours and in one course, 60 hours. And, and then there were 30 hours for, you know, for contact hours. And does contact hours mean like dealing with tutors or, and counselors and that sort of thing?
So the, the contact hours are actually content, so the time that they spend on the, on the content. So the lower number is the amount of content. So if you were just going through and you were, you were reading or, or doing some activities in there, it would, it would be the lower end of the number. The higher end of the number involves all of the other activities that they potentially could be doing, working on projects, communicating with their instructors, with their academic success coaches as well, maybe their fellow students. So the higher number is, is all of that included.
Okay. I guess then my question is, I mean, so are we saying that a student could conceivably like grind out 60 hours of work in a week and complete the course? Or what am I missing here? I mean, if it's only 30 or 60 hours of total student learning hours, why does it take a year or more for our learners to complete?
So for a learner who is going to, to go in and dive right in and put a lot of hours in it full-time, they potentially could be done very quickly. But for the majority of our learners, they have other outside things that are happening, either they're working or they have families and they can only really contribute maybe 10 hours or less a week. And it's so the timeframe is based on somebody who is our typical learner and taking a bit more time to get through.
Well, you, you meant it 10 hours.
Though they can, yeah, it's self-paced. So if they want to quickly go through, if they have, like Amira was saying, if they have transferable skills that they have learned on the job somewhere else that really apply to what it is they're learning, they can get through the content as quickly as, as they would like. But for others, maybe they're brand new to IT and these are all going to be new concepts. It would take them a bit longer.
Yeah, I guess going back to our earlier conversation, if, if the total, you know, if we estimate total student learning hours is only 30 hours or 60 hours, it seems to me that our objective ought to be to help our learners understand that if they really focus and, and devote, you know, as much time as they have available in a shorter period of time that they can complete and get out and get, make advantage of, of their new skill. It seems like if you drag out 30 or even 60 hours over the course of a year, they're going to forget half of what they learned in, you know, in January. And so, I mean, is there a strategy around trying to really encourage people to do it as quickly as possible? And, and is that realistic given the circumstances of our learners?
I'm going to just, I don't think it's realistic. And I, I think like all of what we've learned from our learners and all of what we continue to learn about the many things that people are juggling, make it clear that, that time is extraordinarily limiting factor on the opportunity side, where there is no relief on the wage opportunity side in the short run. So I, 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 I think it's unfortunate that we have a compliance framework that we have to submit course outlines of records in the format that we do and the accounting for those hours looks a certain way and has everything to do with workload and other things. It doesn't actually reflect the journey, the progression, the time of the learner. And so it is, it is, it is a different record-keeping mechanism that we have to do in order to meet with the requirements of how programs are structured and approved within our system. And this is also going to be true when we talk about the federal process as well. But it is not a reflection of the, of, of a time-based approach that, that reflects on the time that our learners have to progress through. And the problem is, in many cases, especially without, without the benefit of additional support or aid, you know, it can be a, a matter of, you know, whether they're able to, to manage their childcare or whether they're able to adjust some of these certain things that are taxing on their time in a way that, that really affects the opportunity cost of the experience. So I just, it is, I know it's sometimes hard when we're looking at documents to see that reflected in what it actually, what the actual experience is for the learner going through it.
And this is, this is just one course and they're also doing the, the, whatever, whatever we're calling, what we used to call essentials. Or maybe that is what we call it now.
Yeah, no, they will not be. So this is, this will be the two courses that are the program pathway. They will not also be in essentials. Everything, all of the soft skills that they need are very contextualized and embedded. And, and they really start working on that in the first course where we're talking about CRM technology in general to really get a good footing at that point as well. They will have career counseling starting right from the beginning. So again, really getting them excited about the potential of working in this field and with a lot of support, a lot of guided assistance from their faculty, academic success coaches, career counselors, so that they, they have that support around them. And they can, like, as you were mentioning, if they have that desire and they have that time to move more quickly, they will be able to do that. If they need more support, they need more time, more references, they'll have that opportunity to, to gain that as well.
I'm glad that that's fully integrated now. That's terrific. So I guess for the typical learner, if they're, if they're really motivated, how, how long does it take them to complete all this? You know, given all the life circumstances that they're facing, do you say?
I, I guess it would depend on how many hours they're spending, you know, a week on it. So it would be at the high end, it would be about 90 hours. And so, you know, if they were spending, you know, 40 hours a week, maybe a couple of weeks, you know, to get through two and a half, three weeks. That's not realistic though, for the majority of our learners. It will, it will take longer and we will have interactions with their instructors. They'll have interactions with career coaches. They'll be, you know, preparing their resume and everything like that. So I would not anticipate somebody being able to get through this in that amount of time.
The, the other thing I'll say about it is what is accounted for in the official course outline of record is, is, you know, associated curriculum and learning. What we've described to you in terms of the student experience, in terms of all of the different supports that are integrated with that, coaching sessions, the, the workaround resume, a lot, a lot of that stuff, we don't get to account for. we don't get to account for in the course outline of record also. So it doesn't actually reflect all the different interaction points that a student has actually coming through the college as well.
Thanks.
Just, I'm sorry, Vice President Costa.
I just want to urge a little bit of caution and couching this as like a student motivation issue. There is a New York Times article about the primal screen and about women right now who know are a large percentage of our students. And I grew up hearing about the, you know, the second shift. And I think most women now are on the third and the fourth shift with online learning. And so I think what we need to differentiate in Calbright, traditionally, when you talk about completion in higher ed, it comes down to, oh, well, the student this, the student that, our job is to make it as easy as we can and recognize the lives that they have. And it's a fine balance. I mean, we don't want people who are super seniors, we used to call them at CSGU, who are continuing on and not making progress. But I also think we should wait on the data and see what the completion patterns are before we start kind of creating goals for the students or messaging things to the students. Because I really don't think it's an issue of individual motivation. I think it's an issue of their life and, and having time to fit it all in, which is a working mom of three children who is now rocking it in fifth and seventh grade. I can tell you this struggle is real.
Other questions? Tom, you have your hand up again. I don't mean it that way.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to apply it with student motivation or learner motivation. What I, I guess the point I was trying to make was that when we engage them at first, you know, we, we assume we're doing this, we're setting out, you know, exactly what the task is to complete this, this certificate. And, you know, with the light at the end of the tunnel, that, that if they're able to arrange their busy lives in a way that enables them to do it more quickly, that they're going to get the benefit more quickly. And, and I know that we do this with our regular community college students too. I mean, we're, I mean, it's all about, you know, trying to get them the resources and the, and the support they need to finish more quickly. And I was, so I was just trying to see if, how, what we were doing around that. Certainly not applying, you know, putting it on the student.
So let me, so let me have a try at this. So language, language is really, really important. So either we are going to be student and adult learner centered and recognize where they are and design our programs and our supports around them and take them at their word that, and assume the best relative to their commitment. And, and then use all of the, all of the, the skills and all of the technology to help, help them as they progress, to engage them, to create experience, experience in a way that they can share that this next two weeks is going to be crazy for them. Because I, I think we just really, I mean, the mind, the mindset that we, sometimes that we come in with is that, one, they're not motivated, two, they can do this based on our own personal experiences. And I, and I agree with what, what Amy has said about the assumptions we make about folks. And we, we can no longer, we can't, we can, can no longer do that. This, this is the place where we, we can stop it and say, all right, if we're going to be student-centered, if we're going to be student-focused, then we are going to accept our students where they are and create an environment in which we reduce any of the challenges they may have to move through the process at their pace. And I, I, I come from that, from my own experience of how long it took me to get through a community college and how long it took me to get through a, a four-year institution and how long it took me to finally enroll in a graduate program. And so, so that's, but that's exactly where many of our students are. And so that's the work that, you know, we're asking CalBright to do, to do it differently, to be on, to be on the, the cutting edge of not quite knowing sometimes. And then using data and using every technology that we possibly can for the benefit of helping our students move on their pathway. So that's not to say that anybody has been wrong in this conversation. I'm just trying to, to, again, refocus on the who the student, who, who our adult learners are and the realities of their life. I have them in my family. Trying to, try, trying to figure out how they're going to put, how they're going to put some kind of experience beyond their high school education to work. And so it's a real thing. Anyway, with that, if there's no other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Jennifer.
Yeah, so you put it so well, because all the commitment in the world can be derailed by a sick child, a flat tire, a power bill that hasn't been paid. And you have to remember that the impediments are many. So the support has to be multifold, if that's even a word. And then I just had a sort of a basic question. Pretend, I'm curious how you describe. So for me, I think I know what, what the job is, the CRM job. But just say I'm a prospective applicant. Tell me what the job, and I'm working, I'm coming from retail. Tell me what this job is that I'm applying for. Help me understand, contextualize the job a little bit because I'm assuming that, you know, I'm coming, I'm like, I might have heard about Salesforce, but I certainly am not necessarily, necessarily understanding this new job that you're, that you're telling me about because I'm not familiar with that world. So propose to me, I'm a potential applicant, tell me, tell me, just in short, you know, briefly, tell me what, what this thing is that I'm applying for and how it will, and how it will help me.
I'm actually going to ask, I'm going to ask Amira to take that one. Thank you. So I am going to tell you, I was a Salesforce administrator ten years ago. So I can respond to that. So if you're coming out of retail and you have been selling something and using a cash register, there is technology that's working behind that. You instinctively know what the cash register is supposed to do. And so, and you instinctively know what you're supposed to do as a retail sales associate. Everything that's behind that, the technology that runs that, that is what Salesforce is doing. So what you're doing is just basically coming up with the rules of how that transaction is supposed to work. That is what you would do as a Salesforce administrator.
So I'm using what I've understood as being on the other side of it and applying it to just the, the other side of the coin, as it were. And so I've learned those, okay, all right. I just wanted to know, I was just curious, because you know, you're out in a world of people like, you know, I mean, retail, I don't know, but I'm interested. Yeah. So, okay, thanks.
No, it is, it's been interesting. We've been having a lot of these conversations internally too around how we demystify some of these things. So when we talk about making these new occupational roles accessible to people, it is reflecting on the skills and the talent that we want them to recognize in themselves in our explanation of what they can do. And we're, we're getting some support and help on this. And, you know, both our faculty and staff on the career focuses and instructional side think about this a lot. And we also have some folks helping us who think about it in the context of behavioral motivation. So how do we connect with, in the way that we communicate about these, these programs and about the purpose of them and the value of them in ways that, that better connect with the learner and taking cues from the learner? So it's, it's both something that we're identifying and working with in terms of what we're building here in this program. And it's an area of communications across the board with our learners that we are also going to be improving upon.
So, thank you. And I don't see any other questions from, from our, from our committee members. But is there any public comment?
No, President Haynes, I don't see any public comments.
In that case, then can I get a motion on this item and, and a second?
So moved.
Moved by Grande and.
Oh, second, Rawlings.
Second by Rawlings. Thank you so much. So can we get a roll call?
Hildegarde, Agüinaldo?
Hi.
Amy Costa?
Amy has left us for a meeting, but she's going to try to come back.
Okay, Tom Epstein?
Hi.
Jolena Grande?
Hi.
Pam Haynes?
Hi.
Jennifer Perry?
Hi.
And Bill Rawlings?
Hi.
So that.
I just wanted to say something. I, I think it's great that we have this closed captioning, but I did notice that when it talked about this most recent item, it called our president, President Haynes. And I hope we can fix that.
Oh, okay. All right. So that, that motion carries. I just want to make us all cognizant of the time. We've really covered two huge agenda items. And I want to thank everyone for their, for their comments and their contribution to this. Our next agenda, agenda item is an action item four point two. And it is the Chief of Staff Support Services Agreement. And we're going to have Chief of Staff Bold present this item because Ms. Stahlheber is, is not with us today.
Great. Thank you, President Haynes, Vice President Costa from afar, and members of the Board of Trustees. I would like to present to you on behalf of the finance team, the Chief of Staff Support Services Professional Services Agreement for your approval. This agreement is being presented for the selected vendor following a request for proposal process or RFP. This agreement provides needed additional support and resources during a particularly busy time of growth for the college, as you know well. The term of the agreement is for one year and the total value of the agreement is up to one hundred and ninety thousand. And we are proposing this and seeking approval for the agreement.
Thank you. Are there any questions of, of the committee members? I don't see any. Is there any? And please jump in, but in the meantime, is there any public comment?
No, I don't see any public comment at this time.
Okay, then, would you please take the, the roll call? Oh, I'm sorry, I need a motion. I need a motion and a second, please.
I'll move.
Perry moves. Can I get a second?
Second.
Epstein seconds. Now will you call the roll?
I believe Hilde had stepped away for a minute. Amy Costa, I believe she's still away as well. Tom Epstein?
Hi.
Jolena Grande?
Hi.
Pam Haynes?
Hi.
Jennifer Perry?
Hi.
And Bill Rawlings?
Hi.
So that motion carries. And if, and when Hilde comes back and Amy, if she can, we'll add, we'll add their votes to, to this motion. The, the next item is four point three, which is the Calbright College's Board Policy Revision. And we're going to have Councilman F. Three Cynthia Smith present the item. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, President Haynes, and good afternoon to you. Vice President Costa, members of the Executive Committee and CEO Menon. I am here to present amendments to existing Board Policy five zero four zero, Records, Directory, Information and Privacy. The amendments provide additional clarity to the policy, specifically the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, or FERPA, is the federal law that protects privacy of student educational records, requires entities to specify what information it deems directory information that might be released to third parties in accordance with FERPA. The amendments to BP five zero four zero clarify that Calbright does not release any directory information. The changes also clarify that some types of records are not considered learner records as well. And I am available to answer any questions about the amendments.
So do we have any committee members who have questions on this particular item? Seeing none. Do we have any public comment?
No, President Haynes, we don't have any public comment.
Then if that is the case, can I get a motion for approval in a second?
So moved.
Grande has moved and a second?
Rawlings will second.
Rawlings, second. Thank you so much. Can I get a roll call, please?
Hildegarde, Agüinaldo? Amy Costa? Tom Epstein?
Hi.
Jolena Grande?
Hi.
Pam Haynes?
Hi.
Jennifer Perry?
Hi.
And Bill Rawlings?
Hi.
That motion carries. Thank you so much. We are now moving into the information, the information and reports section. So five point one is a report on contracts and purchases. And again, Ms. Stahlheber, Heber is not with us. So we're going to have Chief of Staff, Marissa Bold, present on this item.
Great. Thank you, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and members of the Board of Trustees. I'd like to present to you on behalf of the finance team, the monthly reports on contracts and expenditures for the month of January. So please let us know if there are any questions. We'll do our best to answer them and if not, we'll follow up.
Do we have any, do we have any questions on any of these items? It doesn't look like, now, these are not action items and we don't have to, to take a vote on, on them. So the next item is five point two, which is the Calbright College's Sunshine Notice. And let me. So on this item, we're going to have Mr. Grady present, please.
Thank you, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and Executive Committee members of our trustees. I'm Donald Grady, Executive Director of Human Resources and Employee Relations. And would like to present to you for informational purposes and review the first sunshine proposal for that will initiate and enact our first collective bargaining process between Calbright College and Calbright Faculty Association, also known as CFA. As you all may know, educational entities, including community colleges, before starting a bargaining cycle with unions, the, the college district and the union sunshine their openers. Sunshine is a term of art and refers to the government core requirements that the public is placed on notice regarding what articles the district and the union are bargaining and how the public resources are being, are being spent. The intent for today's agenda is not to outline exactly what the proposals are, but rather indicate what are the articles and issues and areas that Calbright and CFA would be negotiating over. So attached in items five point two and five point three are the sunshine proposals of both Calbright College and CFA. We have a, we have an, an interest in negotiating many similar issues such as salary, health and welfare benefits, workload, performance evaluation, leaves, et cetera. Calbright College hereby notifies the Faculty Association and the residents of the State of California that it proposes to negotiate the sunshine articles as part of the initial collective bargaining agreement between the parties. By the way, both parties have already completed training around the interest-based bargaining. And we hope to bring a collaborative, problem-solving approach to the table starting March first. Are there any questions or comments?
It doesn't look like there is at this, at this time. So I want to, I want to thank you for your presentation. And let me just say that I am pleased as a, as a trustee for a, a community college district, we've been doing interest-based negotiations for, I've been on the board for, for twenty-two years. And that was established before I got there. And it is a way to speak about what, what our interests are. Not as, not as challenges, but as opportunities for. not as, not as challenges, but as opportunities for dialogue. And that, that, that just doesn't go on at the time of negotiations, but it goes on throughout the contract process in which, which both part, both parties are trying to solve problems as one goes along, as opposed to waiting for, for a contract's expiration to come to the table. And so I'm very, very pleased with, with that particular mindset by both, both the union as well as by Calbright's administrators. So again, I want to commend and look forward to the work that you are embarking on as we speak about Calbright being and doing and looking for new ways relative to research and, and being really on, on the forward edge, I don't want to say the cutting edge, but on the forward edge of where we are in terms of the world of work, where we are in terms of who, who we are as holistically as, as a state and being inclusive. I hope we bring that, I bring that to the, the table in, in an effort to, to really move the, move Calbright and the employees and the students and the staff along with us in that new forward-looking way of how we, how we do business. If there's no other, if there's no other questions, then we will move to 5.3, which is the sun, the sunshine. The, the sunshine notice. Oh, I take that back.
Covered both.
The, it is the Faculty Association's sunshine notice, correct?
Yes, Madam President, I covered them both. They both are the same, were very similar in what we'd be starting out with.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much. There, we're now at a public forum, the public forum, which members of the public may submit written communication to, to our, our board, our, our executive committee on any, any item either on or off the agenda. And this basically says, written communications that are not on the agenda as an item will be read during this public comment, period. So can you tell me, do we have any public comment at this point?
No, President Haynes, we do not have any public comment.
All right, then. This concludes our public comment section. So basically, the business of the board is now complete, and we can adjourn. I want to thank everyone. The, the conversations that we've had and the discussions that we've had today are critically important. And, and I hope that you gained as much as I know I gained from, from this conversation. And I, and hopefully, this has provided a direction to, to staff on, on what we're doing and how we're doing it. And, and they can make whatever adjustments they need to, and we continue to move this ball forward. So with that, I consider us adjourned, and thank you.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
I don't, I, I don't think we need a motion. Actually, technically, we don't. Okay, all right. See you guys later.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks, everyone.